Angie, are you on there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Mary, you're on there?
I'm here.
Rocky Preston, are you on there? All rise.
Madden County County Commission is now in session, Ward Plant Chair. Dear heavenly fathers, we come to you today, we just thank you for the many blessings you receive, Lord, we just ask that you be with each and every one of us here today, Lord, we just ask it. The decisions we make for the county, Lord, we just pray that they're for the good of the county, Lord. Lord, we just ask a blessing on each and every one that's sick and hurting and lost loved ones, Lord. We just ask for traveling mercies on our way home. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kaliadah, here. Norman Fraser.
Here.
Gary Furr.
Here.
Sunny Hall.
Here.
Phil Melvin.
Here.
Wayne Fowler.
Here.
Michelle Hill.
Here.
Martin Henry.
Here.
Roseanne Ward.
Here.
Darrell Pigs.
Here.
Ronnie Hopper.
Here.
Mary Powers.
Here.
Angie Hearn.
Here.
Don Patton.
Here.
Dana Ferguson.
Here.
Kenneth Miller.
Here.
Rocky Preston.
Shout out to them.
Ward Plant.
Here.
We do have a forum. Do you have an election on the chair person, chairman? Would anyone like to nominate Dana Ferguson?
I want to nominate, um, for Land Board.
I second their nomination. Bill Smith.
I nominate Ward Plant.
Okay, I think.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Ward Plant, second. Anyone else? Anyone else? Safe? Anybody make a motion?
Motion, going for the nomination.
Dana Ferguson and Mr. Hopper. Did they not give the nomination to Ward Plant? Yes, they did. Just, it's hard for you to hear, sorry. When we, uh, the one for Ward was Don Patton and Kenneth Miller second. And Roseanne, uh, Dana Ferguson nominated Roseanne and Michelle Hill, uh, second. So we have Roseanne and Ward. So when she calls Row, uh, if you'll just say last name, is that okay with everybody? And then we can go.
Chairman, can a question be asked? I'm gonna direct a question to Roseanne. Roseanne, I think I know what Ward's answer would be. Should you be elected chairman tonight? I can't find any language under the rules of order that prohibits you from restructuring or changing the standing committees. And I've looked for it today. So, that being said, should you get elected tonight, is it your intention to change any committees?
There might have to be some changes because we have two new commissioners and not knowing if I'm chairman or not, I don't know what committee I would put those commissioners on.
Your answer's accepted, thank you. I'll leave the floor.
Kaliadah, Plant. Norman Fraser.
Roseanne Ward.
Gary Furr.
Ward.
You were doing last name, okay.
Hard to do.
Sunny Hall.
Roseanne.
Phil Melvin.
Roseanne.
Wayne Fowler.
Roseanne.
Michelle Hill.
Roseanne Ward.
Martin Henry.
Roseanne.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Pass. Darrell Pigs.
Plant.
Ronnie Hopper.
Roseanne Ward.
Mary Powers.
Plant.
Angie Hearn.
Plant.
Don Patton.
Plant.
Dana Ferguson.
Roseanne Ward.
Kenneth Miller.
Plant.
Rocky Preston.
Plant.
Ward Plant.
Pass.
Nine for Roseanne Ward. Seven for Ward Plant. Two pass. Two pass. Does anybody want to change their vote?
I'll change mine.
Okay.
To Roseanne Ward.
We have ten, Roseanne Ward, and seven for Ward Plant. Somebody just want to change their vote?
Roseanne, ten, and Ward, seven. One pass. So we're in the ten, so Roseanne.
Roseanne.
Where's the last two chairs?
Thank you. Um, thank you. Okay, thank you, um, for nominating me chairman. I'll do my best. I want to say thank you to Chairman Plant for his two years as chairman, and, um, I know he did a good job, and it's not easy being up here because you do get confused sometimes, and things get going fast and it gets track, but I'll do my best. Okay, next on the agenda is to appoint the chairman for team. Do I have any nominations? We have a nomination for Ward Plant.
I'll second.
Have a second, Kenneth Miller.
Sunny Hall.
Better?
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you have any other nominations for chairman for team?
Gary Furr.
I'll second him.
Gary, do you accept?
Yeah.
We have nominations for Ward Plant and Gary Furr, so, um, when I call, when they call your name, just say, last name, you say Plant or Furr. Kaliadah.
Plant.
Norman Fraser.
Furr.
Gary Furr.
Pass.
Sunny Hall.
Plant.
Phil Melvin.
Furr.
Wayne Fowler.
Furr.
Michelle Hill.
Furr.
Martin Henry.
Furr.
Roseanne Ward.
Furr.
Darrell Pigs.
Plant.
Ronnie Hopper.
Plant.
Mary Powers.
Plant.
Angie Hearn.
Plant.
Don Patton.
Plant.
Dana Ferguson. Gary Furr. Kenneth Miller.
Plant.
Rocky Preston.
Plant.
Ward Plant.
Pass.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'd like to vote myself. I'll change mine, uh, the vote, yes.
Ten votes for Plant and eight Gary Furr. Okay, Mr. Plant will be our chairman for team. How about we just kind of swap places, didn't we? Okay, next on the agenda is the citizens forum. Do we have any names?
Girl.
Yeah, it's all right, did our words go? Um, next is, we need to approve the agenda first.
Mark.
Mark by Ferguson.
Second.
Second by Higgs. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll look at you this, pass. Now we go to the citizens forum. Uh, we'll skip to the second name, which is Attorney Sean Johnson.
Actually, I, I was just, uh, want to mention about, since we have a couple of new commissioners, uh, on occasion, we may do a update, uh, like a legis-, uh, litigation update or case update, uh, what we have. If we want to do one next month, we need to decide, um, because we have to give, go in an executive session, so we have to do that advance, know that it's gonna happen in advance. So if y'all want to do one next month, y'all just let me know. If y'all want to do it in November, let me know so I can, uh, be prepared to update the new commissioners and bring everyone else up to date since the last one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, I think we could probably vote at the end of the meeting to maybe be early next month, like at five o'clock, for that update. Okay, we'll handle that in the meeting. Okay, the, uh, next name on the agenda is Matt Carey. Matt Carey, um, would you come forward? Um, Mr. Austin.
Speak up a little bit louder.
Okay. Do you mind introducing yourself, please?
Okay, I'm, I'm Matt Carey, this is John Bucky. We are members, board members of the Magic Valley Golf Course, and we understand that last meeting y'all had, there were questions that needed to be answered about the golf course, so, uh, we asked if we could come to the board, and the other board members are, they're also mine. And, um, we thought, well, a lot of people didn't know anything about the golf course, and, uh, John's got some stuff together to, uh, to go over to y'all, and then, uh, if you could ask any questions you might want to ask, we'll try to answer for you.
Okay, uh, I didn't know if you wanted to ask questions, or we, you wanted me to go over a lot about the golf course. I don't know how much time I have, but I'd be glad to do either one.
You have five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Well, we were approached about the, uh, adding to the, uh, number of years we could have the lease, and, um, we, we asked for fifteen more years, but I think it maybe came down to about ten. So, this lease first started in nineteen sixty-six, um, and then we have another one in nineteen ninety-six for another thirty years, so you can just about figure out what we have. I think there was a, a problem with us being tied to a country club. Uh, when it was put into existence between the Big Six and the golf course, there was a little bit of a agreement between a country club and a golf course. But for the last several years, there's been no connection with a country club and the golf course. So, um, we, uh, we're on, we're on our own, we're financially able to pay our bills and, uh, do whatever we need to do to keep the golf course up. We're sales efficient, we not, do not receive any money from the county or from the tourism board, so what we make on a daily basis through membership, uh, green fees, parks, food, uh, we, we operate, and we're, we're getting along. We do pay federal income tax, we pay sales tax, uh, we pay, last year, we paid three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, uh, county property tax. So, our lease is just not for a dollar a year we're paying, uh, county. I think the sales tax, uh, the county gets back part of that. So, we're, we're doing pretty good financially. We employ five people, uh, approximately a year. Uh, we pay all their benefits, uh, through the federal government and state government. We carry our own insurance on our employees, workman's comp, the buildings, the content, and the equipment. Uh, we buy locally from about twenty-four different businesses in the county. Uh, we're a public golf course, we allow people to play locally from local government or local people, uh, in the state and even from out of state. And we also have a, a membership, uh, to be a member out there. As a lot of people describe, we're a diamond in the rough, because we have one of the best nine hole golf courses, uh, around. We have members from, uh, Waverly, uh, Huntington, Camden, Nick Sandy, Holiday, so we're pretty well around the general area right here. Let's see, uh, we also allow the, uh, Camden Junior High and the high school to play golf out there with their matches and practice without any cost to them. Uh, we certainly hope you consider this course as a real asset to the county, and, uh, we're very proud of it, and I hope you are, and I hope you'll see that, uh, we, we do have the county in many ways, since we are a tourism county, uh, retirement, uh, we have people playing out there from age twelve to eighty-two, I think our oldest players out there right now, and I'm not far behind, so I may come and range with the, any questions? That part time's something to mess, isn't it? Any questions?
We do have a hundred and seventy members. So that's a little up the last track. And we have more members than Andrew County does at their golf course, Paris, we have more members than McEwen does, and we also have more members than the one at McKinney. So we're fortunate to be right in what we are. A lot of courses are going on, I don't know if you know that, but times are, of course, times are everybody, but we're fortunate to have a hundred and seventy members and to be, uh, in the past, we've had to borrow money every year to get through the year, but the last couple of years, we have not. So we've got a lot of volunteer help from the members, and, uh, if it wasn't for that, you know, we'd be in trouble too, but, uh... If, anybody have any questions about?
We would welcome anybody to come down, get a cart, ride in course, come in, look at our buildings. We have built, in the last few years, we've built about, uh, one or two new buildings. The one reason we need the, uh, lease extension is that we're in the process of buying some equipment anywhere from forty to a hundred thousand dollars, and we would have to finance that, to be truthful with you. And it would cost us a pretty good period of time to, to pay that off, uh, month by month, so that's one reason we're looking for the extension. Good, thank you.
I don't think there was any question about the, the golf course. I don't think anyone was against or, or had any negativity about the golf course. I know several people here mentioned that it was an asset, I know I did myself. You know, I've got, my son and grandson is playing golf out there.
Right.
So I don't think that the golf course was the question at the last meeting. There was a little more to it.
I, I understand that, I understand that. But we're not tied in with anybody else, and we, we just try to do the best for retired people and young kids, and, uh, like I say, we have people from twelve to at least eighty-two.
Well, and we thought maybe there was questions about, about us, about the golf course, and so get this chance and ask questions.
The mayor said he'd like to explain.
What's happening is their current lease runs through twenty-twenty-six, so they've got five more years left on their, uh, lease agreement. At my prompting, uh, I asked them if they would consider, uh, allowing us to extract the thirty-two acres off of their property that they'll never use, and that's that wooded acreage that we have all looked at in our previous packets. So, so they have no obligation, I mean, they, they kind of hold the high ground, but part of our strategy from the property sale committee was that, that's thirty-two acres that's really never going to be used, and I've golfed out at that golf course since nineteen seventy-two, I think many of you have, and I know, uh, John P. and Mac, and you know, th- those are acreage that, uh, maybe in the original intent, that, that could have been expanded, but, uh, the golf course is never going to expand larger than it really is now. They've got nine holes, and that's all that's going to be, uh, I guess, developed within their current footprint. So, property sale committee looked at this as an opportunity to raise revenue for the county, because we know that we've got to be creative in how we, uh, generate, uh, revenue. And, uh, you either get it through property taxes, or an increased sales tax, whatever, but if, you know, no one wants to raise property taxes, but we definitely want more development because we want more property taxpayer. And the strategy of this plan was that it's prime property located in a, on a state highway pretty much, uh, and what better way to grow golfers than to have residential development next to a golf course? That normally invites people in to, to, uh, build a home, or build a condominium, or whatever it may be. So, their original lease again was the twenty-twenty-six, as a way of prompting them to allow the extraction of that property. Part of the return of that was, if we sell anything on that property, we'll return twenty-five percent of the sales back to them to invest in what you call capital improvement, that's, that's reinvesting money into county land, okay? So, so the county owns the golf course, but they don't own what you call the rights to that golf course. They do, until twenty-twenty-six. We do believe that golf is going to be viable in this community, where we are with a lot of retirees, that we want to set the country club, uh, or golf club up for success, but originally in nineteen sixty-six, they had the, it, the idea that they could open up a country club, okay? It was on county property. But then obviously, I'm, I imagine, oh, Andy Fraser was probably involved, or some lawyer said, "Look, you, you know, that's a county-owned property, you cannot necessarily have liquor by the drink, you can't have these type of, uh, actions on county property like that." So, what they did is they extracted off that one piece of property that a lot of us know as a country club, but the Magic Valley Golf Club, North of County, has ever been an owner in a country club. What we have done, though, since nineteen sixty-six, was approve an agreement that was originally brought up with that language, and every time it's been renewed, we've just renewed the original agreement. So I told them that their, that this was a good lesson, that, that, that we probably need to go back to, uh, John Whitworth, or whoever it might be, uh, represent the golf course, and they need to either go to a business name change and take off country club, because there's no country club involved with it whatsoever. Uh, they need to either refile documents, or just refile something legally where the county can just do business with the Magic Valley Golf Club. That's what the original agreement probably, or the revised agreement should have said, and it didn't, and so I can understand how it would lead to a lot of confusion that there's a country club, uh, involved here, but, but that's kind of the history of, of how the transaction took place. I believe it's good for the county that if we've got an opportunity to take prime property next to a golf course, and if we can get it in the right hand of, of white people to develop residential property, we're going to, we're going to gain by having good property taxes generated as a result of that development. The golf club gains by having a reinvestment into their property, which is in county-owned property, we set them up for success at the same time. So, we've already gone through the surveys, we've already gone through all the needed, uh, processes to extract that piece of property off, and so now it's just simply of extending the agreement based on those terms.
We agreed, we agreed with your proposal. Uh, we do not sell alcohol or tobacco on the ground, we never have, and probably will not. Um, as some of you farmers would know, chemicals are very high, and that's one of our biggest costs, chemicals. But we use a lot of them on a golf course. But, uh, if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, but if not, we thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Commissioner Haley. I just want to clarify for everybody's understanding, um, the bar slash country club has nothing to do with the golf course, correct?
No, ma'am, and I, I think, well, at our next meeting, we will, uh, I, I helped build the sign that's out there in front of the golf course, and says, "Magic Valley Golf Club." And to my knowledge, uh, I guess it goes way back to around nineteen sixty-six, when they used that wording, but I think, Mac was president, and I'll make the motion that we get that changed in our new contract or our new lease agreement.
So, if this new lease goes through, the funds that you'll be reinvesting in the golf course will not contribute to the bar slash country club in any way, shape, or form, so there's no conflict of interest between whoever owns that facility and the funds being reinvested.
Right. There have been, I'll say this, there have been alcohol served in that building over there, but they were not tied to us.
Right.
Never have been, since we've been...
And I would also add that technically, we wanted to work it this way, we could hold the funds and have them invoice us for capital improvements. So we would have some control into the expenditures on that particular piece of property. If that was easier, it'd be a peace of mind. Uh, or we can simply give them the money and then just have them prove their expenditures, you know, that it went into improvement of their golf course land.
My concern is not the use of it, it was the fact that last month, there was some question about parties benefiting. So, if it has nothing to do with the golf club, and there's no conflict of interest, there's no concern for it.
Right. None of the board directors are paying a penny, and, uh, so we just do it on our own, our own time.
Well, thank you for your service. You've had a great...
We enjoy playing, we enjoy meeting people, matter of fact, we had a couple from Louisiana.
Yeah.
And I asked them how they found this place, they said, "Well, we just looked down some information, found us, they were on their way to Michigan."
Stopped and played.
Stopped and played, uh, Saturday morning. And I said, "We're glad to have you." Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Hi, Mac, how are you all doing?
Hey.
I'm with Doug Phil, across the road there.
Hell, I don't dub, huh, but I see.
You know, there is no controversy, we, I, I've lived there for the last twenty years, and actually on property on the side of it, there's really no controversy. and actually, on property on the side of it, there's really no controversy, time, what we call the country club, Brett, do you still have an interest in that?
I do.
There's no controversy there, all I worry about is, and living there in Ford District, and most of my family growing up on the side, Ed Corbett, Mr. Raines, you've got Mr. Harden, we've looked at property value there, Mr. Barnett looked at it, it's only worth about six hundred and ten dollars a acre, you say the word extract, you're playing out, every time I hear extract, I'm thinking they're going to cut the timber off, but I just don't, I just don't, I just don't see, that is, for a normal man than that is, there's got to be a better way, and then what you've got to do, you talk about it, they don't want a prime highway, the only access you've got to that is a Davis Road, and then you've got to heal the straight up, unless you, unless you work with what used to be Homer Hollis' place, and Mac, Terry Leonard, I'm saying now, and I don't think he's going to sell that, and then you look at the road there, you've got a lot of highway, you'll have to talk about, I don't know if he's in here, and talk to him about that, there's a lot more involved than just coming up in there, I don't know if you, I don't understand the word extract, just being pulled from the thing, but, you know, there's going to take a lot to do that for six hundred and ten dollars a acre, then you're going to look like a bowl cutter, a kid, look at twenty-eight with the top of the hill, you're talking about seventy-five foot barrier, seventy-five foot on a three hundred yard, three hundred yard hill, on forty-five degree angles, on the terrible folks when you come around the turtle there.
The land you're talking about is thirty-two acres that they've taken from us.
Right.
So we have.
Yeah, I know, we all agree with this, nothing to do with, we have this point of extracting that timber and doing all that, I don't know how you're going to do it, I mean, I've lived there, I've hunted fields since nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three as a kid, taking my golf, golf balls, putting them in egg carts, great squirrel hunting area too, but that's, you know, I think, I'm sorry, I think it's a mistake to cut that timber off and do anything with it, unless you sell it as a whole, with the restrictions on it, you know, the best thing you can do is put a road in, if you can find a way into it, you're not going to come across a golf course, you're not going to come off of Eagle Road, you're going to have to come off Davis Road, and you need to look at the drainage there, it's a bad spot.
If I may add, first of all, the county's not looking at developing anything, and that's up to the free market, and where there's a will, there's a way, now if we timber it, there's about fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars worth of timber on the property, that would be select cut timber, but our recommendation from the property sale committee is that leave the timber on, give some value to that, but the sale, and I've expressed this in the commissioner notes, will be based upon covenants, meaning, we're not just going to sell to anybody to just go in there and do what they want, it's going to, it's got to be developed for residential development, what should we care, as long as they meet those covenants, you know, we know that that property's in a prime location, it doesn't mean that down the road, someone may not buy Bobby Hollins' horse property and be able to access it from Eagle Road, but our onus is to, we've got thirty-two acres that's never going to be utilized by the county, you know, and this is an opportunity to create property taxpayer, that's how the county raises its revenue, so this was an optimal opportunity, based upon the location, maybe it invites a golfing community, which helps their mission, them to be more successful, but at the end of the day, the property sale committee will ensure that there's the legal covenants that we need to ensure that someone's not going to open up trash heap in there and do those type of things, but you've got to start the step A first, and the step A is to get it under what we call our control, if the property committee, and we've got a property sale committee, which was the original parcel, and we have a property committee, I would love for one of those two committees to take the ball and run with it, but at the end of the day, our main thing is to get thirty-two acres out there, you know.
Why not turn it over to a local realty company, and let them do something of that nature, and we don't worry about it, totally allow it, do something of that nature, and put our restrictions on it, and go that way, let a local which has a lot more outreach.
But you see the intent, we don't necessarily want a one, we really want to market it to residential developers, you know, I'm friends with Todd Prince, but let's just say Todd Prince or whoever, they see opportunity there, they'll do the rest, we just have to set it up properly, that we're protected, but we're also inviting investment.
That's why, like I said, I'll tell you, I was, I was a, I was involved in something of that nature, and behind me, they tried to develop something at a bad time, it's a good idea, time, but it's like the market is now with the COVID thing, and homes are selling, but it takes a lot to develop something now, now, I mean, very fortunate, I was able to buy what we got back there, and it's a good place to be right now, but I'm telling you, there's a lot more going to do, I just want to get somebody involved, like a realtor or something of that nature.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Who's on the property sale committee, that's a new one, I haven't heard of that one.
Who is?
Well, when we first set up to sell those two hundred and fifty-two parcels, that we sold two hundred and fifty-one of them, it was myself, Norman Fraser, because he's the chairman of the property committee, Ryan Hall, Tim Burris, and Judge Whitworth, so that was the original, that was the property sale committee, and that's when we structured this particular action, that was a good time to do that, but whether it be property committee or property sale committee, I want y'all enthusiastic about this opportunity, because again, the only other way is increase taxes, and we don't want that, this gives an opportunity for good development in a good location, so more than likely, those properties that would be developed would be high dollar, and, but it's, you know, we first asked the question, would thirty-two, that thirty-two acres ever be utilized by the golf course, and like I said, I've been golfing since nineteen seventy-two, and they're just not going to do it, so this was an opportunity for us to do it, again, so far, we've been very successful, we've sold two hundred and fifty-one out of two hundred and fifty-two parcels that were, that was the county had available to sell, so.
Have we, have we already banked on and sell that, are we already got that money in our budget for the black?
We did budget, what was it, Phil, we said, we did a low-ball figure of like thirty thousand, wasn't it?
Not very much.
That could be recognized from selling that property, but we're not in any hurry, you know, we've done.
Is that something that makes us up in the black, help us in the black on our budget, is that something we're banking on, like before they had, or anything of that nature?
I think we came up, what, eighty-eight thousand in the black, and so.
About a hundred and sixteen.
Or it was basically part of that hundred and sixteen in the black.
I know, I think realtors aren't being involved, I don't see us as, sold a lot of property, you might know where you're located, I'll tell you how, and I've built three homes here in Denton County and lived in them, and it takes a lot to do that, I've lived in that area a long time, I'm just telling all of y'all, there's a lot more to this, if we don't let the realtor do it, and somebody come in, put a road, separate it that way, if you'd like to see more taxes out of it, instead of coming in there and trying to, you know, let them have, you give a chance, ride out Davis Road, it's real simple, and take a gander.
We need to move on, Mac, does John have anything else she wants to say?
No, I was just saying, if we realize any money, we would definitely put it back into equipment, or a park pass, things like that to improve the golf course, but we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Move on to number ten on the agenda.
You don't think this, there are two resolutions coming up this evening, I will not argue for them or vote on them, as they would benefit me personally, but there have been a few things said in the last few weeks that I would just simply like to address, last month meeting, there was a resolution to give a pay increase to the courthouse employees, and I did mention that I thought we were going to treat all the employees fairly, and Commissioner Ferguson said, but the sheriff's department's covered under civil service, and I'm not quite sure what being covered under civil service has to do with getting pay increases through the county, last week at several committee meetings, there was some very divisive language used, and I definitely want to address that, the comment was made, that if these resolutions were to pass, the people who should be most offended are the courthouse employees, that they would resent the sheriff's department employees getting a raise after what was called the most historic pay increase in history last year for the sheriff's office and the jail, in all the years that the courthouse employees got their cost of living increases and the sheriff's department was passed by, I am not aware of a single sheriff's office or jail employee begrudging the courthouse employees their raises, not a single employee that I'm aware of begrudges the courthouse employees the benefits they received last meeting, I don't think there's a single courthouse employee that resents the sheriff's department getting such a big raise last year after having been denied, and if there are, I think everyone knows me well enough that I would invite those courthouse employees just to share their feelings with me, I would never hold it against them or be upset that they have that point of view, so rather than divide two groups of employees against each other, let's talk about the real issues, instead of obscuring it with this group will want it, and that group will want it, and this group will want it, because I don't think that exists, thank you.
Do we have any other commissioners? Okay, we're going to move on then to number ten, County Mayor.
Ms. Powers?
Yes, Ms. Powers, go ahead.
Can you tell Congress that all of y'all is just cutting out terribly, I can hear like every few words, and then it's overplayed for a few seconds, and then comes back.
Okay, I'll thank you for. Let me turn the speaker around, Ms. Powers, maybe that will help.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to number ten, I think, Charlie, do you have anything else to say?
No, that was just.
We don't have any bottom guests, is that correct? Okay, that was your, and now, it's County Mayor's comments.
So I'm just going to talk about the raises, because you stood up and you said that this would be offensive to the people that worked there, and so as a rebuttal to that comment, considering the jail and the sheriff's office, whatever, and that combined package that this commission passed, those were the highest increases that's ever been given, okay, they thought they were given a ten percent raise, but we understand that the math didn't always work out, but it should have at least equaled out to about an eight percent for everyone, so the highest paid, or the highest raise with this last structure that we did, went to the lowest paid person on the total load, so if you were making about twenty-three thousand dollars as a county employee, you realized about a five percent increase, all right, so if you're someone making about thirty-two thousand dollars on the county payroll schedule, you're really making about a three point two-nine increase, that is at least half, if not to some folks, could be triple, tripally lower, that's not the right image, but what I'm getting at is, you know, we gave the courthouse employees, or administrative employees, that particular raise, we have vetted it through budget since probably May, we held off and made an exception on the budget process, because we were doing a certified tax rate, and we wanted to make sure, the new certified tax rate, that we fell into black to be able to do that, so with that raise, and I'm going to come in, Bill Melton on this, because he has been that deep into this, but he vetted it through the proper processes, he waited to see what kind of money he was going to have, what kind of long-range impact it was going to have, and he went through all the processes to ensure that those raises fit within the financial capacity of our budget. The resolutions that were proposed, just in the blink of an eye, put out, first of all, were very ill-conceived, I believe if you wanted a raise for the sheriff's department employees, that the proper way to do that would be to go to budget first, they should be the first thought to be able to say, can we afford this, well, this is what we're looking at, and that process would have taken probably several months to do, so the resolution is very inadequately written to a degree, but at the same time, the first question the commissioners should ask themselves is, is this needed, we just gave them a raise, so that's the thing, is it a valid request, after that's determined, yes or no, then the second step needs to be, can we afford it, and this is how we do it, so this discussion is null, because we want to be helpful, we want to be able to give salary increase, but we need to really do it smart and financially prudent, and, you know, my request would be that you withdraw those motions, or those resolutions, so that, or go on the budget, whatever budget recommends, that would be the first step I would start with, but the budget committee has to be deeply involved in this process, and to me, when you just come and show up with a resolution and pop it on the commissioners, it puts them on the hot seat, because if they say no, it gives the appearance that they're not for raises, but they need to make an educated and informed decision, the only way they can do that is via the budget committee, so that's.
I wasn't addressing any of that, I mean, that would be for the sheriff to do with his department, I just wanted to address some of the language that some of the sheriff's department employees had, that, you know, I just wanted to address that there is no ill-will from any employee at the sheriff or jail that I'm aware of, that courthouse employees received those benefits, we're all very happy that they did.
Commissioner White?
Yes, I, you know, I'd like everybody to like to have a raise, and these raises, especially the sheriff's department, let's see, it's, the mayor just said, the bad thing about this is a proper time of submitting, the time to give a raise, as commissioners, we need to look at the budget and wait until the fiscal time of the year to do it, at the end of the year, the fiscal year is said, ready to be, you know, that's eighty thousand dollars, total everything around that, right here in the middle of a COVID, and I know they did raise, and everybody knows that too, but as commissioners, I can't just come out and vote for it in the middle of a budget, I mean, we just went through the budget, we know what money we've got, and it would hurt us all, or look at the big foods, to add something, not run it to the property committee, and study, I think Phil stood this last, probably nearly two years, before he did, he wrote a lot of acres on it, and they waited on to get the projection of the taxes, or everything to come in, and they found it, and it shook the thorns out, was about to deliver, but they didn't look at it, they waited on that morning, but they didn't get back to them of the amount of money, and that's really done what's done, but I'm not against a raise for any of them, but I can't give it out here in the middle of a fiscal year, because the money's not, every dollar we've gotten, and place where it's at, and basically, we don't want us going to have to turn down the COVID, you know, or the money's going to be, so that's my thought.
I think we're going to move on with the mayor's comments, when these resolutions come up, then we can have more discussion.
I feel the force.
Okay, that's a first, I think, okay, now we're going to move on to the equivalent minutes. All in favor of voting aye, please? Any opposed? Motion passed, for public utilities?
Motion.
Motion of the public, second by the, on favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed. And now we're going to have a resolution, the first one is the resolution with wasting that Senator John Stevens and Representative Bruce Griffin be sent a copy, and if they work in conjunction with the State of Tennessee, prohibit any state hauling contract with any transportation hauling companies which are to link them and chain advert warrant taxes. I want you to get that on the floor.
Motion.
Motion by Thursday, second by Hicks, I can settle for discussion.
Chairman Roseanne, I was a part of the creation of this resolution, I'm very prepared to ask any questions anybody might have, I don't mind describing it in a little more detail, should you want to.
Does anyone have any questions for the law, Commissioner Hill?
This district, the trucking company question, how many employees does that trucking company have?
That question I can't answer.
I'm just, I mean, I'm for this, I'm just worried about if it will negatively impact working families, but I do think they need to tell the town and the state.
I'm going to give a little information, they have the lowering tags, to start with, this tax. To, to start with, this tax is assessed by the Tennessee Comptroller's, um, of the Treasury. They assess the tax. They determine who pays the tax through the licenses and, and things that are purchased through Nashville. This assessment is given to the trustee's office. The trustee communicates the bill to the company, whether that be an email, whether that be the U.S. Postal Service. The woman I'm getting my information from is named Pat Dawson, Tennessee State Comptroller's of the Treasury. I have her telephone number, should anybody wanna talk to her. The, what, I asked her what determines who pays. And a company that is for hire, she said is a company that pays. Company tax, public utility, transportation companies, such as airline, motor carriers, railroads, wireless management, a lot of telephone companies. The total tax for 2019 was $427,000. $427,155,000, that's what our head delinquent tax was for 2019. 321,000 of that goes to the county, 103,000 to the city of Camden, almost 2,000, it's a big thing. Of those people paying this tax, there's 22 wireless and telephone companies, 19 truck companies, 10 of them with local Benton County addresses, 18 large companies, one airline, Federal Express, one pipeline, Mid Valley Pipeline, and six railroad companies. If you want more detail on these companies and want their plan, you can get it out of trustee's office. We have one truck company in this community, Old Neil Milton's son, they paid a little less than $18,000 in the fiscal year of 2019. Now, the company, without getting real personal, that we're talking about in this resolution, let me turn the resolution, they haven't paid their delinquent taxes 2019. The clerk and master has a bill for $137,000, and the trustee's office, they owe $9,779. When you ask me how come they owe to your, the trustee's office, the trustee's office hasn't turned that bill over to the clerk and master's office yet. I'm certain I'm correct on that. Uh, I'm sure I'm leaving something out, I'm gonna yield the floor, so if anybody's got any questions, I'll try to answer. Uh, Chair, I'm gonna recognize one.
Yes, sir. On this, uh, in this resolution, it says, you know, a reasonable payment acceptance is accepted, you know, in order to come up with a deal?
Yes, sir.
Paying it back. Uh, who makes that decision of that reasonable payment schedule?
Well, that's why I asked, let's put it into Bruce Griffin's hands, the John Stevens in the State of Tennessee, and that's somebody smarter than me and you decide that.
Well, I appreciate that and, and recognize that. Um, 'cause part two of this is, is I know one of the trucking companies on there doesn't owe the money, and per drove Whitworth. So this, there's options in this, these 10 that need to be verified by somebody more than us, is all I'm asking.
And what kind of verification are you talking about?
Well, that's what I'll, see, here's the deal, a lot of this can be operated unestimated, where they might not have filed it, and then they just file the same paperwork year after year. You know, the state is recursive, rather than, 'cause if you don't fill it out, that's the worst thing you can do, is not fill out your paperwork. In other words, let's just say you sell six trucks, where you keep being billed for six trucks, okay? So I'm wanting this verified, this resolution, that these people actually owe the money, and I don't know the process, sir, or I, I would've had an answer for you. Uh, I was wanting to, to recommend that it go to our county attorney maybe to do that, but on another note, separate from what I just said, I would like to see some amendments made to this resolution before it's voted on. And I'll be, you want me to expose those now or later?
Let's, Chair.
Just wait, just a minute, if I just have some further discussion. Did I find any questions about this?
I just, I just wanna ask you, because this is a very complex resolution, especially now, therefore be it resolved, that section, what, 'cause explain one last time, what this resolution is going to ask, just so that they're, everyone's on the same page. It's gonna ask that our state officials simply inquire, uh, you know, try, try to give them a picture of what is the intent of the resolution.
The intent of the resolution is if this trucking company doesn't have payment arrangements agreement to all parties, that they can't sign a contract with the State of Tennessee. About a year ago, Waste Management was digging a new sale. This particular trucking company, I haven't called their name yet, I might accidentally, but I'm gonna try not to get real personal. They were moving red clay from Waste Management to the EWS landfill. EWS was taken over by the State of Tennessee, Tennessee, uh, Department of Conservation. They were putting their final synthetic layer on this mound of pollution down here after their cleanup. Well, there has to be so many foot of red clay before they put the synthetic liner down. The clay was coming from the sale that was being dug at Waste Management. The Tennessee State Department of Conservation is trying to attract from this truck company to move that red clay. My argument is, if you're gonna do a state contract, let's pick one of these truck companies that are paying their taxes. I think, uh, soon we're gonna have a four-lane highway built from the River Bridge to the bypass. I hope that in itself is enough to nudge this company, and they come forward. Now, that, I'm gonna add to what I just said about the red clay. Department of Conservation had a conversation with this truck company. And it was found that they owed the county money. The truck company had an attorney here in this county, the tur, the attorney came to the clerk and master's office here, right there, and had a conversation about making payments. It's been a little over a year ago, and there's been no more conversation about that. Now, if anybody wants to, I remind everybody, Pat Dawson is a person from the Tennessee State Comptrollers that is, uh, free to answer any questions, she's a whole lot smarter than I am.
Okay, um, County Johnson?
Yeah, I don't mind looking into, I've already been looking into this issue already, and I, I'll talk to John about that, 'cause I'm not aware of that position, him having that position, I don't know why. I, I researched a lot of the anterior statutes, and what you were talking about is called a force assessment. If someone doesn't file their required annual paperwork, they assess them based upon previous information, which is legal, and it's, it's in line. And the thing is, is when you don't file your paperwork, sorry, you also lose your ability to appeal, to fight, so you don't owe it. So for someone to say, and I don't know, I'd like to talk to him about it to see what, what that is, but I, 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 without knowing more about the information that he's referring to, or what it is, I'm not aware of this company not owing it. And, um, I looked into it, the company that I'm aware of, the main company that we're talking about is represented by, uh, Terry Leonard right now, and I tried to engage them to talk about paying it. I'm not aware of them ever saying they didn't owe it. I even talked to one of the family members that I know that works there, that, uh, there wasn't any denying it, it was just a matter of trying to come up with money, and, um, you know, it just stalled since then. But, but I, but I'll follow up on that, 'cause I'd like to know more information about it, about, you know, the situation. And, um, my personal feeling is that if we don't pursue it, we're never gonna get it, and the, it's gonna keep growing.
And I'm not indicating that we don't pursue something, some force of action, but who makes the decision, is one of my questions.
As far as that, about making decisions about what's reasonable, I mean, I didn't draft it, I, I, I don't know. I mean, as far as, if I was pursuing it, I mean, I would hope that, you know, the, the commission would be okay with me trying to come up with some payment terms, then I come to the commission and say, is this acceptable, uh, to you all? Because any time someone owes that kind of money, you wanna collect as much of it as possible upfront, but if you have to, it's a, it's a basis of how much you pay upfront versus over a term of years of payments. It just depends on the balance of timing. But, you know, as far as what the resolution is, it's up to the commission to, to choose what they wanna do, but if, I've already looked into some of this, and if you want me to look into it further, I'm fine with that.
Um, I would like to say that I agree that we need to pursue this money because it is owed to the county. I don't know that I agree with the sentence at the, in the last paragraph. I don't think we can dictate to the Department of Safety or the TDOT who they can and who they can't contract with, even though you want to say if they don't pay their taxes, don't contract with them. I don't think we can tell them who to contract with. You know, that's up to them. If they're not paying their taxes, that's not their problem, that's our problem. So they have the right to contract if they want to, so maybe we need to reward that just a little bit and make it a little more like, um, instead of, that we prohibit it, that we ask that they look into that.
My thoughts are, we're putting it into the hands of two lawmakers, one senator, one representative. Who's to say that they won't meet in session in January and create a law that would give support to this resolution?
Well, that's something that could come up then, but that's not happening right now.
Now, if you're asking me to withdraw this resolution, that won't happen.
No, I'm not asking you to withdraw.
The most, you got an opportunity to vote for it or vote against it. And if this resolution fails tonight, I accept it, but I won't get recorded who voted for it and who voted against it.
I think most everybody's for pursuing the money, but I don't think we can dictate to the state and tell them that they cannot contract with somebody. That's the only thing about the resolution I disagree with. Ms. Powers?
Yes, um, and, and Chair, um, uh, if you're gonna make comments, um, and get into the discussions that you think you need to step in as a chair temporarily, until you have a, just, um, uh, your opinion on things, because that, that is, um, uh, rubbing through.
I appreciate that, Ms. Powers, but, um, I think Mr. Plant sat up here and talked many times, and he didn't say that, so I think that's the end of the conversation. Okay, does anyone else have any, any comments on this resolution, or?
I've got an amendment.
Okay.
As a different reminder. I don't see what it's gonna cause the same problem, is it don't happen, you know?
There's a handful here, let me, let me do a broad overview before we get into particulars. Okay, we actually got of is misspelt, but at the same time, this says any transportation company, okay? I feel like we need to pinpoint that is to the, the ones on the list. See, it says, that prohibit state hauling contracts be given to any transportation hauling companies unless these companies owing the delinquent adware and tax dollars have a payment arrangement. All right, I would like for it to say, being given to any of these transportation hauling companies listed. So I'm adding of these enlisted. And then on the bottom, I don't know if this is necessary, but it says, after, you know, it says which Benton County fines to be acceptable, and I wanted to add, before any more contracts to be given out, to these companies listed. The way I interpret this, it says any companies can't get a state contract with the way this is working.
Your point's well taken, I can, I can agree with that.
Okay, and that's, that's all I'm saying. Yes, sir?
The only, the only question I have about that, I mean, y'all draft however you want to, but the way I thought this was being drafted, just my reading, never spoke to Commissioner Rocky about it, I, I don't know. But if you do it, and that restrictive of only listing like two companies, and this happens next year, and someone else owes a bunch of money to you, then this has no meaning. Um, it's just a one-time, if y'all mean it to be just a one-time deal only, that's fine, but if you're actually asking the legislature to enact a law or something related to this, uh, to cure that problem from the future, it just depends on which way the commission wants to do it. You just wanna target this one-time instance, or you wanna stop people from not paying adware and taxes to this county from here forward? That's for your own to decide, based on drafting.
Mayor, last one.
I'll, I'll just clarify too, that, uh, I believe that there is policy, state policy, that if you are in, if you are on a delinquent list, uh, there are contract prohibitions within state government. I would think the advantage of this resolution, from what I've read, is that we know Tennessee Department of Revenue, sometimes things just go up there in a black hole. I mean, if, if, if there's, when there's no audit process, any way for them to verify. Sometimes having the state lawmakers involved prompts them to move. But I would, I think, I would like to know whether, I would like to know more about their policy on pro, prohibiting contracts when there's a case of a delinquent tax, you know, uh, uh, or someone found just in rears, you know? I mean, you can be late on your taxes, that's, that's sometimes legal, but being on a delinquent list is a different story. So, you know, maybe getting some clarity on that would probably help, if, if our state lawmakers probably prompted that action.
Well, we're just asking the state representatives to look into it anyway, it's not passing any laws.
Commissioner Hill?
I would like to call the question.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we have an amendment on the floor, but we don't.
I apologize.
Mr. Freiter has made an amendment?
I didn't know it was an actual motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we amended.
I'll second what he said.
Okay, have you written?
Could you repeat that, please?
I, I will. Mr. Freiter, have you written that amendment down?
I have got it written down.
Okay, good. Can you pass it up here, please?
I don't know that you can read my writing, but.
Well, what, do you wanna read it out there?
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
The third line from the bottom, it says with the state of, the PF Tennessee, correct that to of, same line, says being given to any of these transportation hauling companies, adding of these between any and transportation. And he didn't our lawyer's terms there, you know, I went companies listed, okay? He's brought up a point whether we're gonna attach it to this one-time deal or multiple times. So is there any wording that we could twist on that, companies listed?
No, not if you're actually gonna list companies, 'cause it has to be right now.
I'm under impression there's 10 on this list that he's got that are in the, in the rears.
No, I mean, 'cause you're, when you do a specific list, you're, you're pinpointing a certain timeframe, which is as of today or whatever. It does, it won't be any good for next year, 'cause that company might not be on there till next year. That's, that's the point of me saying, do it, junior.
Okay.
Norman, again, let me, let me make a correction. I said there was 10 truck companies with Benton County addresses, only one company's delinquent and they're taxes. Okay?
I thought this read.
Say that again, please?
I thought I'd only read that there was one delinquent when I read it.
Right, my point, my, I was under the impression that there was more than one, and there's not?
No.
Okay, back to the thing. Do you wanna keep it? See, right now it reads, any transportation hauling companies. That needs to be corrected. You catch my drift? The way I interpret this is, we can't issue any more state hauling contracts, period.
That's not the way it's written. Show you last word.
Any transportation hauling, I'm looking for this to, I don't, I don't read it the way y'all read it.
I don't see.
I would like to, I would like.
How do you feel?
Sir?
I don't see a big problem with it myself.
I wanna, I wanna, let me ask.
We're just asking the state representatives to look into it, you know?
It says prohibit state hauling, Mr. Need, thank you, Mr. Hall. Chair, if I may, Mr. Hall, what is your interpretation of this, that you own a trucking company?
It says any delinquent, the way I take it.
Okay, but prior to that, that's what I'm, am I reading something into that, or do I see it that way? I see it that way?
I take it it's the old money.
I didn't say it's no money. I'm just talking about the way it's worded for all hauling companies. Did you make a ruling, Norman?
I, no, I haven't reviewed.
You accept it as written? That does not affect any other charges?
Is this a real question?
No, let me, let me make sure. Is the issue, let me just ask, because, no, I didn't draft this or see it before today, but is your issue related to the word prohibit? And whether or not we're stopping, we're, we're trying to prohibit someone from doing something? Is that what the issue is?
Yes.
Okay. We can't prohibit it, but basically all this is doing in my, my reading of it, and the way that they're going to read it in the legislature, is it, all we're doing as a county is asking them to enact something prohibiting that, so to help us out. But they're free to do whatever they want to do. This is basically just us asking, telling them what our position is. We don't have the authority to prohibit someone. That's why we're sending it to them to basically is to let them know our position on that issue. They might help us out.
I withdraw my amendment. I'm just, hell, I'm confused. What else can I say?
You're withdrawing this rule?
It is a little confusing.
Okay.
But we do need to clarify that the "of" is spelled "companies."
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, that will be great. You know, we're new to this, at least I am. Do we have a county, you're our county attorney, that's right? Could it be us as, who is a county that someone owes us taxes or owes us other money? Could we not just say, hey, we'll sue that company and be done with this?
No, not always.
You can't do that?
No, because there's, since we're talking about the Department of Revenue and the Comptroller's Office, the law, there's hundreds of statutes that talk about this. It says there's a question about whose responsibility it is to collect and sue on it. Sometimes it's the Nashville, sometimes it's local.
So we can't, so you're, in a sense there you're saying we can't tell them, they can't do the contracts for the state, we can't tell them.
I'm not, I'm not saying there's a, that I have a position on that, whether we can actually sue somebody today.
Right.
This, I'm just talking about this resolution when I'm reading it right now. It's just asking for the state of Tennessee, when they're doing the contracting process with this local company, to not give them any more contracts because we're not getting paid our money we've been owed for 12 years. And, and that doesn't affect whether we can sue or not. We can do that separately. That's why I said earlier, I said, if y'all want me to proceed this as a commission, that's a separate resolution, y'all would want me to do that, that's fine.
Yeah.
That doesn't impact whether y'all do this or not, one way or another.
It sounds like we're trying to get this up into the state and make it a law or something of that nature. We've got a lot of issues here we can worry about. I was just looking at, since you were the county attorney, say, hey, they owe us money, sue. And, and that's, I mean, does it cost extra? I mean, does it cost us extra money for you to sue them or anything, or is it just a flat rate?
No, it's not a flat rate. And the other thing is related to taxes, collection of taxes for accounting, there's another set of statutes relate to that for the delinquent tax attorney, which opens up another can of restrictions and stuff that we have to decide whether that falls underneath my hat or not.
This resolution is going to end up with a lot more stuff going on than what it kind of sounds like to me.
Well.
That's the way I was looking at it.
Later to my duties, this doesn't affect anything related to my duties. This is just y'all's position of saying this is, you're communicating to local representatives from this area to, to help us with this problem in the future. That's the way I read it.
Have we got any more questions? The amendment has been pulled, so now we're going to vote on the resolution as it is?
With the word "prohibition."
It's not for "of."
It's not the word "of."
Exactly. I broke off. Paula DeDah?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
No.
Gary Furr?
No.
Sunny Hall?
No.
Phil Melton?
Pass.
Duane Fowler?
No.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
No.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Is this on an amendment or is it on the?
It's on the original resolution.
Oh, okay, yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Eleven yes, six no, and one pass. Number 14 on your agenda is the resolution to appoint Trip Palin to the E-911 board for a term of four years. Do we have a motion? Ward Clan?
Second.
Second back in the building. Any discussion?
Got it.
Oliver Baker?
Chair, that way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to express my opinion on the E-911 board. My opinion is that these members have sat and sat and sat and sat on the boards for years and years and years without progression whatsoever. When it comes to the co-red that for nine years we repeatedly asked them to sponsor or contribute some monies on, they repeatedly said, no, we can't do it, we're not allowed to. Our lawyer said, no, no, no. But all the surrounding county E-911 boards contribute to co-red that have co-red, but Benton County can't. So I just feel like without them, they're not doing their part to really do research enough to, to help the community. And progressing with the E-911 board, or I'm sorry, with the co-red, that we could have had nine, 10 years ago if they would have helped. So I just feel like these members, as their term's come, inspire that we need to appoint new ones. And that the good old boy system needs to change in some way, some form, some matter. So I'm just letting you know, I'm not going to support this. And there are plenty of people that would love to be on this.
Do we have any other names that would be? I've, I've not heard of anybody.
Mayor, actually, we'll talk about that.
There will be some openings coming over the next year, so I am going to entertain names. I've actually told the board that. I know with Trip Palin, I've spoken with Trip, I've been, I've attended meetings. He's very engaged on that committee. But when it comes to co-red, you know, we probably were starting at the wrong place. The county commission probably would have been the first place I started, and we did that this year, we passed it, and we got it enacted that way. E-911, sometimes it can conflict their duty to get involved with co-red because it's, it's, it's much larger than a function here or a function there. E-911 did contribute though to that annual payment that we did. So I was happy to see them buy into that portion, but we adopted it as a county commission from, like I said, at least we did something. You know, it would have been nice if, if they could have done something years ago, but sometimes it's not their mission to do something like that, you know? And, and a lot of them, we've got to educate them. And we did, we did a little big process of educating the public. But you're, you're more in control as a commissioner now that you can approve that contract. You see what I'm saying in the renewal of that? So I would much rather have it in the hands of what y'all want than I would have it in the hands of what E-911 board wants, you see? But Trip, again, the meetings I've been to, he's been very engaged, and, and that's the position. It's really a reappointment of his own position, and I just didn't feel like he needed to be removed when he's probably one of the more engaged members.
How many chief fire department heads do we have on there? Do you know of them?
Well, who's ahead and who's not ahead? I do know that there's about three, well, there's four voluntary fire department members on that board. How big is that panel? How big is that panel? Nine.
I have a question for the mayor. When these positions come open, and since they're, we know when they're coming open, are any of these open positions advertised so that the community at large is aware that if there's someone with a vested interest in serving, that they would have ample opportunity to make the mayor's office aware of their interest?
A lot of times when I, where I'll say any type of positions, you need to come to me first. That's the very first action. I'm always inviting the public to come sit down with me, express an interest in serving on any type of community boards or appointed boards. That's the first action. I don't want to get into a advertisement or public notice unless I'm seeking positions, you know, that no one has expressed an interest to, because a lot of these appointments are timely. You know, you can't wait two months, three months, whatever. A lot of them, we need to fill them soon. We're seeing that on other type of appointments that should have been filled probably a little bit longer ago, but it takes a while to, to structure boards the way you need to. But at the end of the day, it's basically who the mayor says. You know, it's my appointment. And so, you know, y'all are affirming process, more so than a ratification process, but I will entertain anyone that wants to get involved in the community in any way. I'm always seeking people with heart and passion to serve on our boards and committees. So if there's people that believe that the E-911 board is something that they would want to serve on, by all means approach me, but you own part of that process. You've got to understand the, you know, don't come to me and say I want to be on the board and then learn it as you get in there. Be involved before it ever gets to that appointment process. I want people with heart and knowledge in these positions.
Mayor, do we have a list of all our committees and boards in your office that the commissioners could get to know when maybe there's a, a member that's coming up, their term's expiring?
We, we do keep a list on a spreadsheet, and, and since I've come into office, it's, I'm very diligent about making sure it's updated, and because the way it's been in the past hasn't been a very efficient system. You know, we don't know when they, the date they were appointed, or we don't know the date that it expires. And so that's, that's part of putting things on the spreadsheet. So we've improved the spreadsheet dramatically. It still needs a little tweaking, but anybody that wants to know who the members are, I can print that list out for you. And I also keep who was a former member on that list, although not in the main, because we may have to draw from someone. We may have a vacancy. And I may say, Mr. Furr, do you want to serve, you know, you've got prior experience. Do you want to serve on a committee? So I also keep the former members on these lists as well.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Could we have that in our package next month?
You sure will.
Okay, that's good.
Any other questions or discussion? I broke off, please. Paula DeDah?
No.
You sent her out before.
No, yes, ma'am.
Norman Fraser?
Pass.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Pass.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Line number 15 on the agenda, which is resolution number three.
Can we combine number three and number four? Because they're just putting them on the board.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I want to make a motion to combine resolution number three and resolution four.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Commissioner Hall?
But it's two separate people who are voting.
But they're going with the, they're just, you're just.
Going to two separate votes, so if I want to vote for one and not the other, well, I can't do that.
That's true.
You can't separate these or combine these.
I don't see why. Sir, we can't change them anyways.
Okay, you leave your motion there, just standing. So we have a motion, a second, and a fourth. We're going to vote on whether or not we want to put these together. Paula DeDah?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
I've got to ask what I'm voting for.
To combine three and four. To combine resolutions three and four, which are appointments to the industrial board and the solid waste board.
All right, now that I'm clear, I'll vote yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
No.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
No.
Darryl Gates?
No.
Ronnie Hopper?
No.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
No.
Rocky Preston?
No.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Ten yes. Eleven yes, one pass, and six no.
Chairman, you'll take the power two thirds.
No. Okay, we, the motion passed to combine these, so we will be voting on, and I'll read them. I'm going to put a member on the industrial board because Linda Zante has resigned as Secretary of Treasurer of that board, and the new member will be Shay Kim Dudley. The next board is, there's a vacancy on the solid waste board, and it's the recommendation of the county mayor to appoint Kim Summers to the solid waste board for 23 years. Please vote for her, and that's provided. Commissioner Ferguson? Do we have a second?
Second, Fraser, third.
Okay, Commissioner Fraser, break off, please.
What are we doing here?
We're voting to approve these two people to new boards, all in my motion. Paula DeDah?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
No.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
No.
Rocky Preston?
No.
Ward Clan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion passed. We'll both of those resolutions. Number 17 on the agenda, resolution budgeting funds received in an amount of $1,091.82 for the unspoken vote. Motion, Ms. Ferguson?
Second.
Any discussion?
This new one, or?
Paula DeDah?
Yes.
Norman Fraser?
Yes.
Gary Furr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Phil Melton?
Yes.
Duane Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
This is new money.
Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion passed. Number eighteen on the agenda. Resolution budgeting increased recovery funds in the amount of six thousand one nine five fifty within the capital projects fund for repairs and replacements to the repeaters in Benton County.
Motion.
Motion by Patton and seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Planin. Any discussion?
This was recommended by law enforcement.
Commissioner Ferguson?
This is the re, all right, isn't there something in here about repeaters or something in one of these other resolutions? Is this totally different?
I believe it's different.
It is different, okay. That's what I need to know.
Commissioner Ferguson?
I failed to look at this during committee meetings. Uh, has all this repair been done, completed and operational, Sheriff? Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call please. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion. Number nineteen on the agenda. Resolution budgeting funds received from eighty-nine Guado has issued the amount of two hundred dollars within the senior citizen budget.
Motion, Frazier.
Motion by Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions or discussions? If not, roll call. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin? Anyone wish to change your vote? Number twenty on the agenda is resolution in the Benton County Sheriff's Office where they have received funds in the amount of twenty-two thousand five fifty-three twenty-five for the revenues for November August twenty twenty.
Motion.
Motion by both.
Second.
Chair, we need to amend this motion, I believe, on the expenditure item on other charges. Uh, the line item, uh, one-on-one, five-four, one-five-zero should be one-on-one, five-four, one-six-zero.
Second, yes. Do we have a second? I'll agree to, um, correct that number. Four, double's vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we're back to the original resolution. Any discussion? Go call please. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Number twenty-one on the agenda. Resolution appropriate funds in the amount of one thousand six hundred and nine dollars from the Sex and Fender Registry Reserve Account and budgeted within the S R R.
Okay.
Motion by Patton?
Second.
Seconded by? Any questions?
This is new money, isn't it? Proprietive funds. So this is new money.
It's coming out of his budget. This is money that's taken from the Sex and Fender Registry and put back in to buy equipment the TBI requires us to have. It's coming out of the Sex and Fender Registry money, going back into that outfit.
Still, we got a lot of questions at the front. Any other questions? Roll call. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Motion. Anyone wish to change your vote? Number twenty-two on the agenda. Resolution budgeting funds received in award drug counties in the amount of four hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty cents within the drug control fund.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded by Hayes. Any questions? Question? Roll call. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion. Number twenty-three. Resolution budgeting insurance recovery funds received for damaged vehicles in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents within the shared schedule.
Motion.
Motion by Patton?
Second.
Seconded by Hayes. Any questions? Commissioner Miller?
This is money that you guys spent, ain't you? That reimbursement you paid?
Yes, sir, that's what it is. We had the car, see, it's two cars. They added.
This wasn't this budget year too, if that's correct. This seriously depleted their maintenance and repair line items, so it needs to go back in there.
Commissioner Fattah?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Of course, I have an opportunity before this to prepare some police cars. Uh, how does, do we have an deductible for the insurance, or how does that work? I mean, do we, do you have an deductible? Does the county have an deductible on police cars, or what?
That I'm not sure on how that works.
I, I can answer that, sir. Uh, we have a five hundred deduct, five hundred dollar deductible per incident. So on both of these, uh, five hundred dollars for each repair came out of our budget and replacing the rest.
Right, right. That's kind of, that's just what, I'll just...
I was one, but I wasn't going to say for sure.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's part of the seven thousand or something, or?
Well, it's, it's much of a stakeback from the insurance company for the repairs.
Our repairs, we actually...
Probably a thousand dollars or something. You paid to live it, gotcha.
Any other questions? Roll call please. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? On the plan four on the agenda. It says, um, resolution already part of it. It says the state of Tennessee has issued a one hundred percent funding resource to counties to utilize the help cover, to help cover expenses due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the funding source is called the Tennessee CARES Act. Reimbursable grant in each county total funding amount was decided by the population in the two thousand eighteen census configured at fifteen dollars per person. Benton County has been allotted two hun, two hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars in CARES Act funding and has been encouraged to make necessary technology upgrades and advancement, advancements to implement remote access capabilities for general government and legislative operations while the supplies needed to combat the COVID-nineteen virus.
Okay.
That's enough. Everybody understands? Let me bring you more. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Recommended by Crawford.
Any questions on this? Or would you like to say anything?
I'll just say, like I said, this is a hundred percent reimbursable grant. Uh, we don't always have the actual, these are estimated expenses. We still have to, uh, uh, get work done and get the actual invoice in, but that's the maximum capacity that we can give. So, uh, if we come in short, we'll just refund it back to the general fund, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Roll call please. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Number twenty-five on the agenda. Resolution appropriate funds in the amount of four thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents in the drug court fee reserve account within the general fund in order to remit the fees collected during the two thousand nineteen twenty, twenty fiscal year of the state of Tennessee.
Motion.
Motion by Ferguson?
Second.
Seconded by Hayes.
I'll second it. But can I ask for recess after this moment?
You sure can.
That's a big problem.
Okay, roll call please. Layada?
Yes.
Norman Frazier?
Yes.
Gary Fehr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Wayne Fowler?
Yes.
Michelle Hill?
Yes.
Mike Dunery?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Darryl Gates?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
Don Patton?
Yes.
Dana Ferguson?
Yes.
Kenneth Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Planin?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion.
I second his motion to five-minute recess.
I know of another companies to repair this, just recently. Oh, wow, you done it for the work? Three, four years ago, you know, I think in the wind. I think what you're doing there is a, um... Well, I, I'll first. It's so late, I guess it's a broken deal. And they go back and forth. I heard that, I've got like a key there, it's supposed to be, it's not, it's all that. I don't know. I don't know. Well, if you look in the little orders, they, they, this is not really detailed, and that would be used to, it's not, it's not, but, 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 but,[1033.98]
Weeks instead of twelve. And they're staying solid from when they go in there, they don't come home on weekends anymore. Because they're trying to get in that extra class every year because they can't get enough officers on the street. They were quitting to criticism that they're getting, the defunding that they're getting. We didn't get any cars this year, we didn't get any money to repair the old cars that we're trying to keep up and running. And that wasn't the discussions that we had leading up to that. I didn't get any more officers on the street. It is suggested, not required, but suggested by the state that we got thirty-one officers. We've got twenty. I've still got a couple of openings right now. They're just not out there. I asked for two more officers this year, I didn't get them. I asked for four more corrections officers, we didn't get them neither. We didn't get anything. And so I think asking for this raise, when we brought in between our state inmates, we brought in seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We also brought in, y'all took our money, all of it now, where we used to take a part of it, the county commission did. The contracts that I negotiated with, and we got our phone service, our commissary and all that. Now then the county commission takes all of that, we don't have that to fall back on. So there's eight hundred and twenty-five thousand or a little better that the sheriff department brought in this year. I don't think this rate raise here is unreasonable. We are the only department that brings money in. Uh, just like to tell that out there, you know, we've done everything that was asked of us. I asked for eighty-six hun- seventy-six hundred dollars, I'm sorry, to buy mattresses and blankets and things that we'd had to have because our numbers was way down on state inmates. And it took two years for the county commission finally realized, okay, if we give you that money, can you bring us in three hundred thousand? And several in this room told me, if you can bring in three hundred thousand, we'll give you the things you need. We brought in over eight hundred thousand. And we didn't get anything. And those, I'm telling you, they're leaving us like crazy and going to Carroll County and other places. And they're leaving in the jail back there because they make a couple of dollars more an hour. This would help, it would show that we're trying. I want my employees to know that I'm trying to keep them here. I've got good employees, I don't have a lot of complaints on them. I'd just like y'all to seriously consider this. I don't think I'm being unreasonable when we didn't get anything else. I just would appreciate it if you really considered this, my employees deserve it. And they've worked hard and this job that we got now is harder than it's ever been. And I'd like to be able to keep that by the gods.
I'd just like to say, Kenny's right in what he said. We did tell him, if you get these prisoners in there and start making us a profit, we can get you what you want. Now, we did promise them that. And I, and since they didn't get raised for ten, uh, ten years, I think we ought to consider this, not this year, not right now, not the way this resolution stated. I think we should give the budget committee time to work this out. And then do it at the beginning of the next fiscal year. And it's, and get him cars and jailers and whatever, whatever he needs. We need to start getting this for Kenny because the police is a very important part of this community. If something happens, we don't call the mayor. Somebody tries to break in our house, we call Kenny. Those people got to come out there. If guns are involved, they got to stand up there in front of those guns. No, these, these, these people need to be compensated for what they're doing. And I agree with Kenny on this, I just don't agree with the timing.
There's, there's a lot of people that need things, you gotta go with what you got to give them. You can't always give somebody everything they want.
We can give the sheriff's office.
And I don't remember promising that we give him anything he wanted.
Well, you need to check them records because we did, we told him to bring in a profit. When he, we told him to get the state prisoners, he said he would, he would and we would deliver things that he needed.
Commissioner Hicks has.
Rock, Rock, you want to, well, no, he won't speak anymore.
Thank you, Chairman, Mayor, Sheriff, Commission. I'm not going to get into the science of this resolution, I'm not going to get into the science of properly bringing up a motion or resolution for raises. I'm going to remind everybody of some facts you already know, new. Sheriff Kenny took over and Tony King's last year for state prison dollars was four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. A few years go back, it was two thousand and eighteen, the state prison money got down as low as a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That is when Mr. Hopper reminded us just now, many of us in this room had a conversation with the sheriff. You get your state prison money back up, we'll greatly consider having a conversation getting your wages and benefits up to par as to compare to the surrounding counties. The very next year, two thousand and nineteen, the sheriff went to work. These are all audit numbers that I'm giving y'all. State prison dollars went from a hundred and ninety-five thousand to four hundred and twenty thousand. One year's time ago, it was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The highest year up until now, be going through all the budgets I've got, the highest state prison money we've ever got in a single year was two thousand and thirteen, we got a little more than four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Now, we got some information that came from Sheriff Beasley's office, the trustees downstairs. The fiscal year, and the sheriff gives us a number, and I'm going to give you a different number, but his fis- fiscal year I'm talking about is October, excuse me, July the first to the last day of June. The dollars that state prisoners brought in, in those twelve months, the two thousand and twenty fiscal year was six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And your officer pretty good start in the fiscal year we're in right now, we're getting thirty-seven thousand dollars in the general fund tomorrow from state prison money. And without, that puts us at eighty-seven thousand dollars to the new fiscal year that we're in. Please, uh, Lori, correct me if I make a mistake here, I want to talk about the budget.
Okay.
On page six of the budget that just got passed, two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year, you'll look under state prison, we're looking at income and revenue. I'm going to remind everybody that income and revenue is just an estimate. You could call it a guess, you could call it a hope, but better word is an estimate. If you look under state prison money that we're estimating coming from the state to the county from the fiscal year we're in right now, it says four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's a conservative figure. I just told you, last year, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars come in from state prisons. And you'll find that next year in audit. I'm going to say something, Lori's going to correct me if I'm wrong. We can amend the budget, we can amend the line item, state contract prisoners, we can amend that to be another eighty thousand dollars, and there's where your money comes from to pay for the sheriff's raises. Now, you're still standing in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars lower than what state prisoners brought in in two thousand and twenty. So, don't let nobody, and Lori hadn't told me I had made a mistake, so I must be on target. You want to know what we're going to pay for these raises? We're going to amend the budget and we're going to show more state prisoner money. I'm going to yield the floor, Mr. Patton, is that question.
Well, you know, the jail, I was a commissioner when that jail was built.
Yes, sir.
And when it was built, it was said that that was going to be full of state treasures, and it was going to pay for what we had to pay for the jail, which was several million dollars. And it ain't paid back yet. So before we start spending that money, we got to look at where it was, it was supposed to be full of the first raise.
Your voice, well taken, Mr. Patton. Does anybody remember the year, the first year the jail opened?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand?
Two thousand and ten, I believe. Was it ten or twelve?
Two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten, I'm just going to say one more fact and I'm going to yield the floor. In two thousand and eleven, the audit numbers for state prisoners was two thousand seven hundred, two, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. I'm going to yield the floor.
Commissioner Melton.
I guess because I'm new, I don't want to understand all this. Of this six hundred thousand, is that the gross that we receive?
Yes, sir.
What's the percentage typically of profit in that?
I would have to estimate what it is because it's going to vary depending on the medical costs and things like that that we might incur. We have kept our inmates until COVID hit. We was keeping about five empty beds in a hundred and forty bed facility. And we was keeping five, maybe ten empty. We was keeping the jail as full as we could of state inmates. When COVID hit, they had us cut back and send state prisoners out and release everybody locally that the judges wanted released for nonviolent offenses. So it's cut our population way back. But I would say that a safety would be seventy to seventy-five percent would be profit. Unless we had major medical issues. Now, the way the state does different from our county inmates, our state inmates. If we send somebody a slip and fall or we think maybe they're having some kind of illness, heart attack, something like that, we send them over to the ER. If the ER keeps them overnight at the hospital and it's a state inmate, then the state pays all the bills. If they treat them and release them and bring them back, then the county has to pay for them. That's kind of one of those clauses they've always had in there. I would, I would guess around seventy percent.
Chair.
Commissioner Plaugham.
I'm hearing a term that troubles me, kind of want to go on record. The term profit in county, I don't know that's a good term. Surplus funds maybe, or surplus, it's another word profit. I would like for us to be aware of that.
Commissioner Plaugham.
Yeah, how can y'all look at the numbers here as far as deputies and guards? You know, things vary and change, I'm sure that's an importance, how many deputies have and how many guards. What would you say the percentage rate over across the board would be of a raise? What do you think this would be?
I, I couldn't tell you that, I have my book.
Is everybody, is everybody getting a certain percentage of some amount of raise?
According to your pay rate, Mr. Walter.
I mean, everybody stepping up two percent, three percent, or?
I don't know what that would come out to, my book people might come here telling y'all percentages, I really don't know.
I mean, everything's equal across the board, everybody working in the sheriff's department is obligated to that. You don't.
Everybody would, would receive the same percentage, I suppose, is what you're, what you're saying.
Did you have a number? No, I don't have a percentage wise.
Oh, okay, I can't see them.
I think you have a number, percentage wise.
Normally, when we do a pay increase, it's a percentage across the board for all employees. But this is, um, this was, the sheriff based this on the wording of last month's, um, resolution for the courthouse employees, which was four hundred dollars per person. He wanted to warn his resolution as close in verbiage as that, and so this will be each employee receiving twelve hundred dollars on top of what they're making. So I don't think it works out evenly on the percentage like the normal do.
Okay. Commissioner Plaugham.
Yes, I just want everybody's permission to keep in mind, I'm not for rates, not at this time. We're just fixing to spend right at four hundred thousand on new buses and cameras. We ain't put the first dollar back for new cars that are going to be coming up. So this money that we're doing, it doesn't, it ain't all profit. You've got, as he said, they had one heart pace, you can't have one up to a hundred thousand dollars in a hospital. You just don't ever know. So, when you do this, that wise, that's really, I said, at the end of the year is when you do that, when you get your money in, you see what you spent that year. You just go do that now, you, you're likely to come next year and say, we got to waste five percent on, on the farmers, on the taxes, on profit. So I, I'm not saying that they, that they don't need it, I'm just saying we're in a bad time of the year to do it, until you project. You know, and I said, we, it ain't all profit. We're fixing to pay the SAD report, we want to do the SAD report. I don't, sheriff's going to have to have cars. We ain't got the first dollar put back for none of that. So, it's not all profit, saying we got seven hundred thousand. And he doing a good job, and which we should do that. That's what we elected to do, is to, is to try to support.
Commissioner Melton, do you have anything?
That's right, we just, I've been spending four hundred thousand dollars.
Commissioner Melton.
The resolution does not take into account that the sheriff's office is paid hourly. It has no provision for overtime. Anytime you raise salaries, your overtime is going to go up as well. We have no estimate of what that's going to be. Uh, that would be a red flag to me immediately not having that information. And something else you have to keep in mind, whereas the sheriff's department is hourly, it has the, evidently, the majority have access to overtime hours. When you're looking and trying to base something off of what was worded for the courthouse employees, they are salaried employees. They do not have the options of getting overtime that the sheriff's department has. It's easy to say, do the same thing for everybody. But let me tell you, when you start looking at the, at the money, at the figures, it becomes a lot more difficult. And if the sheriff's department will help me get the figures that I need, I will continue working on longevity and pay raises for all the employees. But this makes no provision for that. And if, if you pass this money now, you're going to come back and have to put more money into, to cover the overtime hours that are going to be, uh, affected by this.
Commissioner Patterson. Will this approve by budget?
No. No.
Just want to clarify some things. First of all, to Mr. Hopper, uh, I tell everyone to call the sheriff's office and the sheriff tells everyone to call the mayor's office, so that's the.
I don't believe I've done that here. I will.
But as we said when, two years ago, when we started with our fiscal processes, we said that there would be some change in habits, the way we rebudget money. Uh, like I said, you talk about profit or surplus. Uh, if the sheriff brings in six hundred thousand dollars off, surplus off a, a prisoner, that's not, that's, that's a moving target. The next, the following year it could be four hundred thousand, another year it could be a million. So, you don't want to always base, uh, your actions off of just one year. We seen with COVID could change the way our occupancy in the jail happens. So it could, one day we could, we could have six hundred thousand, COVID could change it. Now that we're in ankle braces, they're out in the community, whatever, but maybe we don't get as much. But, so you want some consistency before you make any decision, it's going to be a permanent change to your budget. This is a permanent change to the budget, this is not discretionary funds. Okay, so, so when you make this action, you are forever making this action. And this is why we just said, this is a process that we have to thoroughly think out. Uh, Commissioner Melton did a great job at explaining that. And you have to implement it knowing that you're going to have the money. Another question to ask, as we said, just because you make six hundred thousand surplus doesn't mean all six hundred thousand gets rebudgeted back to the sheriff's department. The county, that's the people's money. So the county body will make the decision whether they want to give them fifty percent back or a hundred percent back. But those are all processes and actions that y'all need time to think about. Another thing, when it comes to budget, uh, I believe the process that the sheriff went through when he first initially submitted his budget, uh, knowing that we were in a recirculation year, and actually, I believe it was the very same month we just voted in, the increases for his current staff. So, so there was a lot of confusion there. Uh, but just because they say no at that time and set your budget, it doesn't mean that you can't come to every single budget meeting and lobby your viewpoint. You know, so, so maybe there should have been more follow-up. I think if, you know, they probably, you probably had the impression that you had that one chance to submit it, you could have continued to come back. I doubt they would have accommodated you because we were in a recirculation year and we knew that we had just given budgets to the sheriff's departments. But the main thing is, is we also have to look at the step raises. The reason your officers may go, or employees may go eight years without a raise is because they max out so quickly. Their step raises, if I'm not mistaken, don't they max out their salaries in three years?
Yes, sir.
So I think there's room to work there. I think maybe we should look at five years for, for, but when you match out within such a short period of time, come year five, come year six, you're going to be thinking, man, I haven't got a raise. I think the original structure might need to be tweaked, but that's something that the budget and the commission needs to discuss, that particular process. Uh, Commissioner Nutter, you know, you were talking about how much we made. We get paid, let's just say, forty dollars an inmate. Most of the time, if we were to budget and, and expense it, be it fifty percent. So we'd say, we're going to get forty in, we're going to pay twenty out. But the real business amount is probably eight to twelve dollars an inmate, per day, per day. Doesn't mean it's going to stick there, just like the sheriff said, hey, COVID hits, it changes your expense ratio. My whole emphasis about this is, is not the raises, it's the processes that we need to build, uh, uh, more efficiency in and more thought and clarity and discussion in. So, so I'm just putting that out there. Longevity raises, I think, I think you're right on on that. I'm totally supportive of longevity with a tweak to the language. But this particular raise is complicated. And it's not something that I believe the commission or the budget committee really is going to fix uh, in a two and a half week period from when the resolution was dropped off to a vote tonight.
Commissioner Patterson.
Yes, could we get, from the sheriff's department, roughly, you know, when everything goes, how much it costs for an inmate from the state? Roughly, by next month? I don't want to put you on the spot now, but by next month, what we have is, you can be in a package so that we can know, uh, we get forty dollars from the state, but it cost us twenty dollars, eighteen dollars, whatever the average is out for, you know, food, in, um, what, you know, electricity and, you know, yeah, all that.
I'll try to, I'll try to put this up together, Ms. Ferguson. I, it's going to vary from inmate to inmate.
Yeah, or hell, or sometimes, yeah, but I mean, you know, on an average, you can figure out what it's going to be per.
I'll work with the sheriff administrator, we'll get as close to figures as we can. Again, we don't control the state inmates, so everybody knows. I can't, they can come in here anytime they want to and say, we're taking every state inmate you got, we just built a new prison. And we want them, because they know that we kept our jail COVID free. They've come to me twice in the last two months, wanting to take our state inmates at other facilities who moved forward with the work release program. Because some of them came here because I told them we was discussing putting the work release program in. Gibson County wanted twenty of our, we've got thirty-eight right now. Uh, another county, I believe it was Dyer County, was wanting nine. And, uh, they wanted our state inmates because they've been incarcerated for a while and they're, they're COVID free and they can put them right out on the work release program. Now, I can keep them from coming in and taking them, so far they haven't, they took them from other places. But as soon as COVID is over, I can also turn around and say, okay, I would like to have, uh, you know, twenty-five or thirty more. And then our numbers would go through the roof once COVID is cleared out. But, uh, I, you know, we, we don't control whether we keep them or not. They call and say, I want inmates, so and so, and I've got two or three of them that I've been trying to get them to take because of medical reasons and things like that. And I haven't been able to get them moved. So, uh, I'll get you as close to figures as I can. But I just want y'all to understand, I can't control that. But we have pulled in every state inmate, we could pull the whole time, and we kept the jail in capacity. Which that also brings up our food costs and other things like that. And this year, we didn't, nothing was taken into consideration. We didn't get to put in the inmate garden because of COVID. That was savings between eight and ten thousand dollars a year on food costs. We didn't get that this year, but I also didn't get that much money in budget to cover it, didn't. I just, I really wish budget would have talked to me this year and we could have got a lot, lot more done than what we're trying to do now. If we don't give this raise, I, I understand that we don't get it. But what I'm trying to tell you is, we're out here, all, all the sheriffs are vying for these officers out here. I mean, they, we're talking about step raises, we can get them up to top pay in three years, we move to five, we can never get nobody. We need to be starting them out at top pay just to compete. When the city can pay what they're paying, and they get raises every year, and we don't. I keep losing my officers to the city. I lose my corrections officers to Henry County, Carroll County, all around us. I understand we're paying all we can pay, but I can't keep people in there. I tried to go to budget this year and say, if you'll give me four more corrections officers, I can save you money. Because what Benton County done was came in when the jail was filled, and they said, what's the minimum amount of corrections officers we have to have in the jail? And they gave the minimum amount. Okay, so every time somebody's out, which almost everybody's there, has two weeks vacation or three, and they've got sick days and everything else, I've constantly got somebody out on every shift. So I constantly am paying that extra person that we could have put on each shift overtime money, where it would have been straight type. But nobody talked to me about that. Nobody talked to me about the fact that we didn't get, we didn't get the inmate garden this year. I've got line items that have zero dollars in them that's always had money in there. And I told budget, or told the county commission, when y'all voted on it, I'm going to be coming back asking for money. There's no way we've stated in our budget. When you don't give any new cars, and I was told three years ago, we'll always get you at least two cars every year. You depend on that, you've got to run it like a business. If I park the other three officers that I have openings for right now, I don't have cars to put them in, not dependable cars. You'll see a bunch of cars sitting up there. I call them my dummy cars that I park in different places. They're not impishable to run emergency tracks. If I had known we wasn't going to get those cars, then I could have planned for it. But I, I didn't even get any money to keep the old car around.
Sheriff Christopher, we've got, um, somebody else asking, I had to interrupt you.
Okay.
We need to kind of move on with it.
Well, we all know the sheriff's department has all the funding they can get, and thanks for your time. What about, what about the incentive plan, you know, you know, maybe surplus? You know, maybe percentage at the end of fiscal year? I know the DOB used to do that, occasionally get something back for our equipment being, and acting decent. Is that against the rules, like I say, he brings in six hundred thousand, three hundred thousand of it was, what's the word?
Surplus.
Surplus? Could we that promote more incentive to bring in more and say, hey, you distribute this among your employees? Could we do that as long as we're still good and black and things of that nature? Without sticking to something like Phil says, you know, something with overtime and things of that nature, could that be done? You know, just to kind of split the sheets a little bit or something, or?
I would just counter that by saying, in the good years, you up your maintenance of effort, what happens when you have a bad year? You up your maintenance of effort, there's no contingency worry.
Stay at basic.
Uh, to that. And, uh, everything's on the table. It's whatever the budget committee and wants to jump in and structure. Uh, but even the sheriff mentioned several things that were just happened this year within the upper deck, just happened this year. Just goes to reinforce the fact that raises are never something that you'd want to just do literally. It was dropped off the first week of the month, and here we are, you know, fourteen days later trying to pass a, a permanent fixture to the budget.
I did know, I, I come in here and listen to some of these meetings, and I've heard him mention the six hundred, you know, which I have no idea of the numbers. I was just trying to make an active medium to, you know, the equipment costs of the county. Like he says, uh, overtime, things of that nature. You know, if you don't do good, you're back to basics, you know?
And just, and just to reinforce what he's, what Commissioner Melton worked on, the employee raises almost a year.
Right.
You know, with the data, that's how he, it took him. you know, with the data, that's how it took him to structure it, and I think he came out with a great plan. So give him, give, give him time, and I think he'll figure something out.
Commissioner Hopwell.
Kenny, would you consider pulling these two resolutions and working with the budget committee and bringing it up at a later date?
I'd be more than happy to work with the budget committee. Mr. Melton is really easy to work with, and I'd like to sit out and talk to him. I just never got that opportunity before. And I want to say this, we brought in our figures, the sheriff, with the commensary and everything that was taken away from us, those phone services, and I really don't appreciate that happening, because that gave us some wiggle room. It was already given the county commission money that we should have been keeping, and now they took it off. So we don't have any wiggle room at all. But we brought in over eight hundred thousand dollars. Okay, let's just say six hundred and fifty, seven hundred thousand is clear money, and I do believe it is. What I asked for in my officers and my corrections officers, everything we asked for, cars and all, still left the county with about four hundred thousand dollars. That was still to them, plus we paid our own way, and we didn't get anything. We didn't get cars, we didn't get anything. In fact, we got cut just a little bit. So, you know, if we brought in that kind of money, you would think that when you're still giving the county it's over four hundred thousand dollars, it's coming back to the county commission from what we done and paid our own way to pay for those officers.
What is your, what is your, what is your yearly budget?
A yearly budget?
Yeah.
Three, three what, Rochelle, total, for jail and, and sheriff's department together.
What, what, what do we, what do we give each other?
About three point five to three point eight billion dollars.
Ah, three point five to three point eight billion dollars.
I'm trying to figure that out. I have it right here.
I couldn't remember, it's three, three point something maybe.
Yeah, I, I don't have the budget.
I want to say three seven maybe.
I'm just reemphasizing that just because you make the money this year does not mean that you make it next year. And that means, it, it is not a consistent process. And all I recommended was, sometimes you need two, three years to see that you've got a consistent measure coming in. Uh, and I don't believe that, that the commission's ever said no to this part. And I think they have always found ways of making it work. We were in a tax recertification year, that is why they went with a more conservative approach. Uh, which at the end of the day, only left us with what, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in the black at that time. So, this is great discussion, but, but, uh, we're not going to fix this problem tonight.
I don't, I don't think we're going to fix this problem tonight. I think if I was to do this in a normal project, I think this is the wrong way to go about it.
Commissioner Ferguson.
And just remember, this is the one line item that we're maintenance of effort with them. If we increase the salary by this, we have to continue it and rescind going here. We cannot cut it down.
That's why I'd like to see if we'll through the budget.
Yeah, it's, it's not just a one-time thing, yes, it's a forever from now on.
Kenny.
Sheriff Christopher.
Also working on something with the cars as well.
Or?
I'm also working on something with the cars as well.
Commissioner, I, I will be more than happy to set this off two, three months and let me work with Mr. Melton and see what we can come up with that'll work best for everybody. And then I'd like to be able to bring it back at that time when us vote on it then, if that suits the commission. But I'd like you to take some careful consideration, and I'll also bring my numbers back at that time as to what I have brought in this year so far that's guaranteed money for this next year to show that we're, we would even be higher with this COVID thing. Like I said, they took some of our state inmates. If that hadn't happened, then our numbers would be higher this year than it was last year. Because we had a very good year starting off until that hit. But I'll, I'll be happy to pull this resolution and work with Mr. Melton. And I'd like to be able to bring it back in a couple of months though, so that we can talk to, talk about it more.
All right, so you're going to pull resolution number sixteen and seventeen?
Yes, ma'am, at this time.
Move on then to number thirty on the agenda. Resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-four sixty from the unassigned revenue from County Journal Fund for the victim assistance assistance that was collected throughout the two thousand nineteen eight twenty four year in order to remit the funds to the Women's Resource Assistance Program. Okay, motion, Mr. Ferguson.
So what did you say on that? So I pulled it off and I'm standing here.
That's okay, um, it, it's money that's collected through the courts that they give to the, um, Women's Victim Assistance Program. It's called RAP. They collect it.
Oh, the RAP? What, what, what we doing with number sixteen, did he pull it?
Yes, he did, he pulled that one, and seventeen. So the national is number thirty that we're on, which is the money that we're going to direct to the Women's Resource Program.
Okay, wait.
Any second for this?
I'll say it.
Any questions? Any discussion? Go call. White, Whitey Datt?
Yes.
Norman Frager?
Yes.
Gary Carr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Duane Tyler?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill?
Yes.
Mike Henry?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Gary.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
John Paxton?
Yes.
Anna Parkinson?
Yes.
Ed Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Christen?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carried. Next is the according of the nodules. We have five nodules.
For the better motion, Chairman. Did we not have a resolution on the camera system?
No. The, it's a bidding process, so it was, it was put into the budget already. And so the process, after once it gets budgeted, I take up the process and go through it. I believe, okay, Commissioner Frager, I'm speaking. Here's the third of the law, I suppose.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. The nodules are Christie Baker, Crystal Hasting, Alicia Owen, Lori Peters, and Rosie Turner. Motion.
Motion.
Mr. Frager and Burke森. Say goodbye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any others? Can I now add that any other business? Sheriff Christopher?
Yes, ma'am. Recently, the, out here at the industrial park, uh, where we sold off some timber, what I want the commission to do from the county commission is I have my inmates cut firewood every year. And they take it and deliver it to people that heat it with wood, they're on fixed income, maybe don't have the money for it, and then teaches them a trade. We put them through a chainsaw, safety class, and selected company furnishes and, uh, for us. And so it's worked out quite well in the past. We haven't done it in lock, I'd like permission from y'all. They'll cut those tops that are left out there, they're just going to lay there and ruin anyway. And it's smaller pieces of wood that elderly people can handle either. And, uh, we've been doing that at different locations around the county. So that one out there would be ideal for us, if nobody has any problems with cutting those tops up there, just laying there.
I like the motion to do that.
Oh, we have a motion?
What are they, can you? It's safe to start ear process and everything else.
Yes.
Uh, but we do put them through a safety class.
And then do that.
We, we need a motion to suspend the roads to vote on. Sheriff Christopher.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it today.
Get that operated, Miller, to suspend the roads. All in favor, and we have a roll call for that.
Thank you.
Whitey Datt?
Yes.
Norman Frager?
Yes.
Gary Carr?
Yes.
Sunny Hall?
Yes.
Bill Melton?
Yes.
Duane Tyler?
Yes.
Cheryl Hill? Mike Henry?
Yes.
Roseanne Ward?
Yes.
Ronnie Hopper?
Yes.
Mary Powers?
Mary Powers? Yes.
Angie Hearn?
Yes.
John Paxton? Anna Parkinson?
Yes.
Ed Miller?
Yes.
Rocky Preston?
Yes.
Ward Plan?
Yes.
Any wish to change your vote? Okay.
Mary Powers did, Mary Powers did two votes, let's see.
Got it. Now we need a motion to give the sheriff permission to cut wood after that. Motion.
Say it today.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion.
If they have.
Any other business? Wait. I'm like, I'm going to sit. Okay, yes, um, one has asked that we all keep Susan Hudson, is our Benton County librarian, in our prayers. She's in the hospital, she needs prayers.
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Well, we got another hand up.
I'm. Well, I can't stand that.
As property chair, uh, we've went over the camera system for the new sheriff's department and the upgrades. Uh, need to, uh, get some discussion open on that and put it in Mayor's hands to move forward with this project. And basically what he's asking is that both property and, uh, law, uh, recommended getting the full system. Okay, and, and so then we went to budget and said, okay, they have recommended the full system, which was roughly going to be, let's just say, three hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, we had four hundred and forty built into the budget for that and a Sally Court. So that was going to leave us short on completing the Sally Court. Budget advised that originally they were going to look at five hundred thousand from debt service over into the capital projects to pull this off. So it's just a process of going back to the comptroller and asking for an additional, uh, the, the additional funds to complete both the camera system and the Sally Court. So I guess in a way, Phil did, we say, would be about four hundred and ninety or five hundred thousand.
Right, right, four hundred and ninety thousand.
At the end of the day. And we've got to get new cameras as well, uh, that we did not factor into the Sally Court with this new camera system. So roughly, ba- basically, law and property recommended the full system, and budget said that they can make the money work. So basically, I can go ahead and make that decision, uh, it's in my hands, but I'm asking for an affirmation from the legislative body that you're on board with this and that that's what you want us to do.
Motion.
I'll say it today.
Commissioner Burke森 and?
I probably know less about camera systems than anybody in this room. I would, uh, if appropriate, with your permission, Chairman, I'd like to ask, I think, I mean, we remind everybody, I think there was a minimum of about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and then we had four alternatives. Am I right on that?
Yes.
Later. Uh, Scott Hill, you know more about camera systems than anybody I know. Can you tell me your opinion and your advice and what you think we need to do?
I was actually part of this process. Uh, I worked with the sheriff's IT guy as well. We reviewed the jail and, and saw his needs and took in consideration what he was requesting and what was needed. And through my recommendations, Brian Owens' voice recommendations, we had Stanley Security Services, or Stanley's Company, came in and, and they kind of looked it over and gave us a little bit more of what, uh, we're needing to look at and get from that. We built a, a bid process for that, sent it out to many different, uh, companies. And we actually only had one come back, uh, in the deadline. And, uh, so we awarded that, uh, that bid, and we gave it over to the mayor. The mayor looked it over, and because of all the different packages we had for that, both what was the, the minimum necessary just to keep the jail going versus what we needed in the future, I don't believe in, in just putting Band-Aids on, on the system and then we're back in the same boat the next year. So they actually worked us, uh, the, the close-up, and we did the bid process to actually put in what we like to call the Cadillac system, just so that way we don't have to worry about it later, and it will have many years of use, so we're not having to bug the commission for more money next year, and the next year.
And how many thousand was it, two or three, did they read from the bid?
Sixty-five thousand dollars by, by following this process and, and securing the right, uh, uh, you know, folks interested in it. It saved us sixty-five thousand dollars from the original quote that was put.
I'm, I'm just glad you guys, uh, had, had the wits to, to stop the emergency funding of it when we actually went through this process. Saved a taxpayer dollar, sixty-five thousand. Thank you.
Okay, so do we want to go with the recommendation? If you do, everyone say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Don't want to oppose this, so we break the limit. Now, motion to adjourn. I've got one more.
One last comment, and I'm sorry about this, but, uh, with new commissioners on board, uh, we have, uh, two people, uh, that sit on the commission that are employed by the school system. We have one that was employed by the sheriff's department. We have a commissioner who does work with the county. We've known that we have kind of gotten in trouble in the past years by not understanding what a conflict of interest is. All I ask is that you study up on what a conflict of interest is, know when to, uh, uh, you know, step out of the vote and know when to step into it, and, and, and what constitutes a conflict of interest or not. I've asked for a county attorney that beginning in October of every year, we need to sign some type of announcement that we have either been in training or that we understand what we're doing. And so he'll come with a form.
They have to go to training, and it's online.
Say again?
They have to go to training, and it's online.
Correct, but this is ethic, this is, this relates to ethics and, uh, we should be doing some ethics training. But, yeah, only because we've gotten in trouble in the past, we really need to ensure that we're reinforcing this, this process.
Okay, the two of you ones, are you going to put them on the same ones that would have been on him, whoever they took over?
I don't know, I'm going to look at that.
Okay, so then they won't be on the next committee meeting?
I'll have the committee before the next meeting.
Okay, now. Do you have a lot to adjourn?
Say it today, yes.